Alright, welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order.
You can take it to the ladder, yeah?
Little ladder.
They're having a good time.
Hello.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you take a roll?
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Alright, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, or my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Dr. McMullin?
Well, good evening and thank you for attending tonight's L.A. Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel as important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting outside of our recognitions. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending and will now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you. Alright, item 2.01, the adoption of the agenda for tonight.
Would we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Motion 370. Onto recognitions and awards.
Good evening. As you can see by this packed house, we have a lot of great recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. Tonight, we're going to begin our recognitions with a community partner. I'd like to ask a few staff members to come forward to help us with this recognition. Would Heather Skunover from Community Development, San Ivan Felt from the L.A. Public Schools Foundation, and Career and Technical Education Coordinator Barb Gonzalez come to assist with these recognitions? Tonight, we would like to honor and thank Johnson County Community College and the JCC Foundation. Would the following please come forward to be recognized? JCCC President Dr. Andy Bowen, Executive Director of the JCCC Foundation Joy Ginsburg, Trustee and dear L.A. friend Nancy Ingram, and Director of Admissions and Recruitment Pete Belk. Johnson County Community College has been a leader in our community for more than 50 years by providing innovative community college resources in our service area. The JCCC Foundation has supported our district the past four years, providing scholarships to all L.A. Public School students who received the Kansas CTE Scholar Award. This year, our district had 73 recipients of this distinguishment from the state and subsequently full-ride scholarships to attend JCCC for two years. The JCCC Foundation has supported the L.A. Public Schools Foundation for 20 years and provided nearly $25,000 in support, which has helped meet the growing needs of student mental health and wellness. It keeps going, there's so much great stuff, okay. Collaborating with United Community Services, JCCC and the L.A. Public Schools designed and implemented Bridge to Success, aiming to connect the existing mentoring program at the L.A. Public Schools with the Student Success Program at JCCC to ensure that students successfully bridge the gap between high school graduation and college. And this created new opportunities to achieve positive education and training outcomes for students with limited family supports, students in foster care, and students experiencing homelessness. In addition, community college staff and trustees have served on 21st Century Academy Advisory Panels, served as youth mentors, and employability skill training sessions. We are honored to have Johnson County Community College and the JCCC Foundation as a dedicated partner with L.A. Public Schools. Thank you for all of your support. Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. Okay, next, we'd like to honor all of our 6A state track and field winners. We actually had winners from all five of our high schools, which is amazing. And I had this really great plan. So I was going to have everyone come up all at once, and then we had this incredible turnout. So I'm actually going to divide it up by school. So ignore every instruction I gave you outside, and just listen closely and I'll give you the scoop. So, tonight, we're going to start with L.A. East High School. We had an amazing state champion, Andrew Kirby. If you could come forward with your coach and principal, Assistant Principal Mike Wollgast. Andrew won the title in the boys' pole vault. So let's give Andrew a round of applause. And I'd also like to have our Director of Activities and Athletics, Matt Johnson, come up as well. Listen, we're all just... And Andrew, if your family's here, we'd love for them to stand to be recognized as well. Okay, next, we're going to honor L.A. North. If the team and coaches and Josh Price Assistant Principal could come forward. First and foremost, and this is going to require applause all on its own, but the L.A. North Boys Track and Field Team ranked first overall in the 6A competition. So let's give them a quick round of applause. And next, for our individual honors, so raise your hand when I call your name. Jacob Parrish, Boys 100-meter dash and 200-meter dash championship. He's a K-State, okay. Josh Parrish, Boys 110-meter hurdles and long jump champion. Jason Parrish, Boys 300-meter hurdles. Paul Roden, Boys High Jump. And then finally, Kalia McGinnis, Girls 100 and Girls 200-meter dash. Congratulations to all our L.A. North Track and Field winners. L.A. North parents, please stand to be recognized. Congratulations. Okay, L.A. Northwest, we'd love to have you come forward. Alright, first and foremost, and again, this is going to need its own applause, the L.A. Northwest High School Girls Track and Field Team placed first overall in the Girls 6A Track and Field. And now for our individual winners. Olivia Cooper, Girls 100-meter hurdles. Adrienne Locke Garcia, Girls Shot Put. Val Galligan, Girls Javelin. And then the Boys 4x400-meter relay team of Colin Gann, Jarrett Voorhees, Alex Ling, and Brett Beard. And the Boys 4x800-meter relay team of Jack Beard, Alex Ling, Jackson Cool, and Brett Beard. Congratulations. Okay. Alright, Northwest families, please stand to be recognized. We had two competitors from L.A. South who could not be here tonight. So I want to read their names and recognize them, but I also want to recognize the fact that their Assistant Principal and their coach is here in the back. If you guys could wave, because awesome accomplishment. And their state winners were Caitlin Estrusco, Girls High Jump, and Jordan Allen for Boys Discus. So congratulations to those. And finally, we're going to recognize our L.A. West Track and Field Champions. If you could come forward along with your coaches and principal. Alright, and from L.A. West, our champions include Kennedy Klein. Kennedy, if you're here, raise your hand. Girls 400-meter dash champion, congratulations. And the Girls 4x100-meter relay team of Nora Howard, Kennedy Klein, Parker Jackson, and Abby Feyman. Raise your hand. And the 4x800-meter relay team of Kate Miller, Newport, Paige Baker, and Karis Robinson. Congratulations to all of you. Can you get them in? Alright, L.A. West families, please stand to be recognized as well. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
Give them a second to sort of clear out. That was awesome. Okay, moving on to information presentations, Dr. McMullin and Mr. Keiger. I don't know. Do I need to get closer?
Well, good evening and thanks for the opportunity to present to the board tonight. My name's Jim McMullin. I'm Assistant Superintendent over Middle Schools and Safety Services. And with me tonight is our Executive Director of Safety Services Brett Keiger. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the shooting at L.A. East last spring, some internal reviews, information, things we did well, lessons learned, and then really move into the next mode of what's next for our school district in terms of safety and security. And we've got some exciting new things to share tonight on that front as well. So obviously, you know, the shooting took place on March 4th last spring. Since that time, there's been numerous discussions, meetings, reviews, interviews, survey to the staff, et cetera. Those have all, many of those have been internal. We've also met with our partners at the L.A. Police Department as well. We did take the time that certainly with the shooting taking place in the front office to personally interview any staff member either involved in the shooting or in close proximity. And then all other staff were surveyed to share input and information as well. As you may know, the District Attorney's Office just recently released their findings from the shooting. And our Safety Services Division will be wrapping up our internal review within the next 60 days. So tonight, though, we do want to take the opportunity to share some of the things we learned through our review over the last few months. I'll start with some things that we feel like we did really well, and then we'll move into some lessons that we learned as we went through it. First and foremost, I just need to commend the L.A. Police Department, our relationship with them, and specifically our School Resource Officer Unit. It's an unbelievable unit that's very dedicated, very well-trained, and that was evident in the quick action and response taken by SRO Clark to keep a situation that frankly could have been much, much worse and keep it from getting there. Another great strength that day was just the quick communication between the building personnel and district personnel, which instantly gets all of our protocols and processes flowing. The building was put into lockdown quickly, and the rapid response by our first responders was just incredible. The scene at L.A. East, the number of officers from municipalities all across the metro were there. And I also would be remiss if I didn't mention our L.A. Fire Department as well was a huge help that day as well. You know, one of the things, when you look back, that we did really well that we've never done before in the history of this district is reunify a 6A high school, 2,000 kids. And that's quite an undertaking. It sounds easy till you figure out you've got kids who ride a bus, you have walkers, you have some kids that ride a bike, you have parents who pick up, and then you have student drivers, and then you have students who ride with student drivers. And so, making sure we were able to, with the assistance of the PD, dismiss in an orderly and safe manner. Frankly, we had the entire building secured and dismissed by about 1:45 that afternoon, and were able to reunify students with their families at two of our middle schools that day. Special thanks to our transportation partners, DS Bus Lines and Assisted Transportation, because with the exception of the student drivers, we transported all of our students to one of the two middle schools, whether they were a bus rider or whether they were a parent pickup student. So and again, finally, just the calmness of the staff at L.A. East that day really, really helped our kids that day. And I can't thank the staff at East enough. It's one of those situations you hope you never go through, but they handled it beautifully, as did our students and frankly our families as well. You know, anytime you have a tragic situation like that, you certainly have things that, as you evaluate them, you think, okay, that's where we could do things a little differently, or that's an area where we could have improved. Really, the biggest takeaway for us was the consistent communication to the staff during the lockdown. You know, our students were in the classrooms for about two and a half hours. And, you know, initially, as we started meeting with public safety, we knew the kids were in the classroom with the teachers. They were locked down, they were safe. And so you kind of take that worry off your plate and you start focusing on all the other pieces. But the need to communicate more frequently with the staff and frankly with the students during that time was a lesson learned and a takeaway for us, and certainly received that feedback as well. Proper and timely notification to all the buildings in our district. You know, it doesn't take long to learn L.A. is the biggest small town in Kansas. And, you know, across our district, we have staff who have children at East, and they teach in our buildings and work in our buildings all across. And, you know, we always in L.A. pride ourselves with our Communications Department on controlling the message. And that was an opportunity where, I think, a little quicker, we could have got that message out to our entire L.A. community as well. We did have multiple reviews and meetings with the L.A. Police Department to really just ensure proper protocols, specifically when there's a weapon and the search for a weapon, and made sure that we were able to clarify that and clean that up. We did the same with all of our secondary administrators in terms of protocols, procedures, and expectations. And then certainly, that just prompted an overall review of all of our safety protocols and products and programs as well. So given that, it certainly led into a recognition of a lot of the pieces that we have in place that we're very proud of, that worked very well. And then we've also now added a new product that we're real excited to share with the board tonight. So I'll turn it over to Brett Keiger to kind of walk you through safety for this.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin, and good evening, board. Thank you for the time again to go over this. This product is an exciting thing for our district. And, you know, what Dr. McMullin just mentioned are some areas that we can improve. And one of those ways is quick notification to everybody in our building. And as you can imagine, with the size of our buildings, notifying everybody quickly of a critical incident is a challenge, whether they're in a classroom, or in the hallway, or in the restroom, or in the gymnasium, or in band, that's a challenge. So one of those things that we thought could help that is this particular product. So the product I'm going to talk about tonight is Crisis Alert. Crisis Alert simply is a badge that looks just like this, that all of our staff members will be issued. That's at elementary, middle, high, support buildings. Every district employee will be issued this badge. This gives them the ability to press a button and quickly summon help, no matter where they are on campus. And so what we anticipate our staff using this for is going to be for a variety of issues. It could be a medical emergency, it could be a disturbance, it could be an elopement. Many things that our staff deal with on a regular basis that this badge can help with, and it can help summon help quite quickly. So that's what we call the Staff Alert, which is a lower-level type assistance. The badge also does two things. The second thing it does is it gives the ability to put a building into lockdown. And by, when I say that, I mean notify everyone in the building that we should be locking down. So this is really the first time we've given, we're essentially empowering all of our staff members that if they see something of critical nature, a critical threat, they can... members that if they see something of critical nature, a critical threat, they can notify everybody in the building, students and staff, that hey, there's a real threat here, and we need to get behind a locked door. So what that does is that speeds up our communication, and it speeds up the time to where folks know that they need to get behind a locked door. So that's the second great feature that I love about this badge. Additionally, students are going to know about this, and we want students to know about this, that this is not, this is not a secret to them, that the intent is not to be a secret. They become aware, we're going to be utilizing this with our drills. So students will become aware with when the beacon flashes a certain color, what that means. It's going to be all built in to our annual drills that will start shortly after students start showing up for school. So with that in mind, I want to take just a brief moment, and I want to share an informational video about the product and how it works.
You are the first line of defense in the safety and security of our students and staff. With the Synthegix Crisis Alert Platform, you now have the ability to notify the appropriate responders immediately in the event of any crisis or emergency. The Crisis Alert Badge you have been given is the core of the solution and should be worn at all times. Wear your badge above the waist, either clipped to your lapel or on a lanyard. It is important that you do not leave the badge unattended or accessible to students. Hang keys, flash drives, or other items. Glue or attach other badges to your Crisis Alert Badge. Puncture, bend, or damage the badge. Your Crisis Alert Badge will work anywhere on the school campus, both inside and outside. It will also work if you are on a campus at another school in your district. With just a click of the button located on the Crisis Alert Badge, you have the ability to trigger the Crisis Alert Platform. Your badge can initiate two types of alerts: Staff Alert, which is an urgent request for help needed, and Campus Wide Emergency Lockdown. The most common alert is the Staff Alert, which requests the immediate attention of responders, such as in a medical emergency or a fight. To activate, simply click the button on your Crisis Alert Badge three times. The badge will vibrate briefly, then stop, letting you know the signal has been received and help is on the way. While you attend to the problem at hand, responders such as the principal, nurse, and resource officer are notified of your location and can quickly come to your aid. The second and more serious alert is the Campus Wide Emergency Lockdown, such as in the case of an active shooter situation. To activate, keep clicking the button until your badge vibrates for a prolonged period. All computer screens in the school will display a lockdown alert with important instructions. You will know that lockdown is initiated because the strobes in each classroom and throughout the school start flashing, and a pre-recorded lockdown announcement is played over the intercom.
This is a lockdown alert. Immediately lock your doors, turn off the lights, stay out of sight.
Now you can focus on your students and proceed with your school's lockdown procedures, and be confident knowing help is on the way. The Crisis Alert Platform also sends your alerts to a centralized desktop interface in the District Head Office, where all schools are monitored. Using the same desktop interface or a smartphone, the District Office can initiate emergency protocols remotely, appropriate to the situation. Your new Crisis Alert Badge by Synthegix is key to keeping your school safe. It is important to wear it and keep it accessible at all times. If you lose or misplace your badge, please let your administrator know immediately. Remember, there are two types of alerts. The Staff Alert for when urgent help is needed is three clicks. To trigger a campus-wide emergency, just continue clicking until the school is in lockdown. Ensuring the safety of students is one of the most important parts of your job. The Crisis Alert Platform and Crisis Alert Badge by Synthegix give you the peace of mind to know that with the simple click of a button, help is on its way.
Do not buy...
So that's just a brief overview. That's actually the same video we're showing our staff to show them frankly, how simple it is. And as you can see there, what I like about it is it blends very well with our ALIS protocol. So we're an ALIS Protocol District, and the A for ALIS is Alert, meaning we need to send the alert out that that's something critical is going on, and that's exactly what it does. So we're really excited about it. We've been doing trainings all week. The company's been installing them the last few weeks, but all of our administrators have gone through trainings today, as a matter of fact, and we're just really excited. You know, we're actually the first district in the area to adopt this, so we're just really looking forward to rolling this out. You know, one of the biggest things for me is just the way it's going to empower our staff, you know, even if they never have to press the button, the fact that they know they can is really exciting. So really looking forward to rolling that out. And we actually, our initial goal was to have our secondary buildings up by the start of school, and I'm pleased to announce we're actually ahead of schedule, and all of our school buildings are going to be going live on Thursday, the 11th. So really excited for that. Wanted to take another moment and just talk about some of the other safety initiatives that we have. First and foremost, I want to talk about some of the upgrades that we're able to get with a bond that our community passed in the spring. First of those is our camera upgrades. All of our buildings, all of our schools had cameras, but our elementaries had mostly just exterior cameras, and then a lot of them are aging. So what the bond is allowing us to do is increase the power of those cameras, plus additionally, add some additional cameras to the interior. So they'll basically follow a similar template to what we have at our secondary, at our middle and high school levels. Our exterior doors and locking upgrades are going to be great. So right now, we're putting what we call Door Contacts on every exterior door. What that does, that allows a principal, or here at the District Office if we choose, to get notified if a door is propped or not secure, which is extremely valuable. You know, our doors are intended to be locked during the school day 100% of the time after arrival, and this will help just ensure that takes place. Additionally, we'll be electrifying the main doors, or the main entrance locks, rather, because currently, what we do at the elementary level specifically is someone has to go around and manually lock the door and unlock them in the morning. What this does by electrifying it, it allows us to set up a schedule so that it simply removes the potential for human error, somebody missing a door and leaving it unsecure. So really looking forward to that. Additionally, we've been doing a three-phased digital radio upgrade in the district over the last three years. This will complete that. So the remainder of our elementary buildings and our support buildings will be getting the digital upgrade, which is a significant upgrade from the old analog technology that is outdated. In addition to that, just the typical server replacement and upgrades over time, those who are out, their life runs out, and that's where we are. So we're getting new servers, and then our access control migration, which basically is, it's going to allow us to have a better sight of how our buildings are being accessed and who's accessing them. So really looking forward to those upgrades that are in process right now. Real quick, I want to touch on just the continued safety procedures we have in place. So these are the things that we already are doing on a daily basis. This isn't the full comprehensive list, but obviously, our access control policies, our doors are locked. Our doors are not left open during the school day, except for at arrival when we have our adults are supervising. Other than that, our doors are locked. We utilize the Raptor Visitor Management System. What that does is when visitors come in, we require our folks to drop their driver's license into a scanner, and it prints off a badge with their destination and a picture of them. What that does, it allows us to better know who's in our building. It also runs that individual against nationwide sex offender databases, so we can make sure we know who's in our building. We have installed a NightLock Door Barricade Device. That's the picture that you see on the top right of your screen. But what this is, is it's called a Door Barricade, and basically what it is, it's an L-shaped device that slides into a plate we install on the door, and then it drills in about an inch and a half into the ground. What this does is this just feeds into our ALIS protocol again. If a student or a teacher, rather, decides to lock down, we ask them to barricade the door. We have these currently installed at all of our elementary levels, with the idea being that those students, it might be more difficult to push a desk in front of a door barricade. So what our teachers can do is simply drop this device into the door plate, in the door and the floor, and it locks that door further than just the thumb lock. Like I mentioned, we're an ALIS Protocol School. Our staff receive annual ALIS training. That's been in the case for about a decade or more here in the district. We utilize the MyEOP app, which is our emergency operations procedure. We used to print off hard copy notebooks of all of our manuals and protocols, which very difficult to update those and keep those current with the size that we have. So by turning it into an app form, we'll be able to access it. We can access it on our phone. This coming year, as a matter of fact, next week, we're rolling it out to all staff. This previously has been just for administrators, and we saw the need to have all of our staff to have it that easily accessible. So that's coming this week as well. Our building and district radios, so every building in our district has a district radio that allows them immediate and constant contact with myself and folks here at the District Office. That way, if power ever goes out, connection ever goes down, they always have an opportunity to reach out to us and ask for help. Our SRO program, like Dr. McMullin mentioned, is robust. We've had it for over 25 years, and we have SROs in all of our secondary schools. We maintain a fabulous relationship with the Alatha Police Department and rely heavily on them for services. We have a district mobile app with anonymous tip reporting, so anybody with that app can get on there and anonymously submit any tip, whether it's safety, feedback, whatever, it will get funneled to the right person. We also have some online monitoring software that we use for our student devices in case somebody might be researching something that could be harmful to themselves or others. And the last, but certainly not least, we have a comprehensive threat assessment protocol. Basically, what that is, is when we have some of our students that might be struggling from mental health situations, or have made comments that that might be a threat to themselves or others, our mental health professionals get involved, and they do a threat assessment to help get the services to the students that need. This is our Safety Services Team led by Dr. McMullin, and then the rest of us are up there. I wanted to, I thought it was important to include our partners with the Alatha Police Department. You know, we meet with them, we speak daily, but we meet monthly just to go over any current topics, trends, anything we're seeing. And I think that's a huge piece of the relationship, just to make sure we're constantly on the same page. Another addition writing this year that I'm really excited about is our School Safety Specialists. So these are individuals that we're placing in the high schools. So there'll be one at each high school, and as a matter of fact, all of the ones that we've hired are retired Alatha Police Officers that all have a minimum of 25 years or more of actual experience. And what that's going to do is it's just going to give us another set of eyes so that our administrators can focus more on educating, and just gives another set of eyes and a body to check doors, check on situations, and just provide some feedback and some guidance for anything safety-related. So really excited for that program that also starts next week.
So as we wrap up, you know, I think anyone in the safety business, and specifically the school safety business, will talk about the biggest safety measure you can have is great relationships between trusted adults and kids. And we feel like we have that here in Alatha, and it's something we want to continue to build on. You know, we really encourage kids and adults, if you see or hear something, then say something, because certainly, reporting is how we get in front of situations. And again, just a final thank you to the student, staff, and parents, community members in the East community for all they did during and certainly after the incident last spring. We're fortunate we came out the way we did. That being said, we'll stand for questions.
Any questions?
I just have a couple. First, thank you very much for, I know this has been your entire existence since, was it March 5th and 4th? And I appreciate so much all that you're doing to ensure the safety of our kids, and I know it's been a lot, and I feel like we're heading in a really great direction. One of the questions I had last week was specifically about the button and how we serve all kinds of students, but young ones, three-year-olds, sped kids, kids with impulsive behaviors, and there was concern that this button was something like a fire alarm on the wall. And I said, and this was two teachers that had reached out to me, so I said, "When you get your badge, you'll understand, but could you just show it?" It's a flat...
Yeah, it's really...
It's a flat kind of surface, but it has an indentation, would you say?
Yeah, absolutely. So it really, it just looks like a normal ID card or access card. And then you'll see there's a button here, you might be able to hear it here. It's, I think it's on test mode, isn't it?
Just don't lock us up.
I guess we're about to find it. But you'll see, you just hear that buzz after you hit it three times. You got to hit it three times pretty quickly. And again, the beauty of it is, is even if there is an accidental push of three, that is just going to that building response team, and then Brent Keiger and his team as well. The eight clicks to put a building on lockdown, that certainly takes...
Quite a few.
That doesn't happen by accident, certainly.
Good. Another thing I know we've discussed, but I want to mention, we had gotten feedback from our itinerant staff, so those would be our staff that travel throughout the district, as well as our substitutes, wanting the same access to information and quicker as we were looking to provide for our regular educators in every building. And so can you just speak on that briefly, that when a sub checks in to a building, what that looks like, and then how our itinerant staff aren't having to get a new badge every time they go to a building, they have one assigned to them that will work everywhere they go?
Correct, yeah, that's a great question. So I'll address the itinerant staff first and then talk about our substitutes. Our itinerant staff will be issued a badge from their home building, if you will. And again, everyone's badge works on any district property. And so that's the beauty, not only for our itinerant staff, but for district staff that are visiting other buildings. They work at both of our athletic complexes, C-Bac and ODAC as well. And so it doesn't matter if someone is in their home building or visiting another building, the badges will work. For our subs, our long-term subs will be assigned one permanently, obviously, because they're there every day for a long duration of time. Our daily subs will be checked out one each day for now. As you noted earlier, we've kind of been on warp speed here, getting this thing up and running before school started. And so one of the pieces we're currently evaluating with sub services is while the plan starting next Thursday is to check one out to our daily subs every day, we're going to look at the data, and our folks that sub on a frequent basis, and what that cut line is, I don't know, but maybe two or more days a week, we may just go ahead and just check one permanently out to them, and it's one less thing they have to do when they check into our buildings each day. So that's something we're working on currently.
Excellent. And there's some, I don't know the terminology, I'm guessing some sort of a geosphere or geo net, that if I leave school as a teacher and go pick up my kid at daycare and toss my badge in the back of the car, and he's sitting there punching it, as long as I'm not on school property, that means nothing?
Correct, yes. The two key pieces there, one, you have to be connected to the district network, and so you have to be on one of our campuses for it to work. So that takes away the piece of it going off at home. And then, what?
Bluetooth.
I'm sorry?
Bluetooth?
Oh, yeah. And so it connects to just our Bluetooth network, and so it doesn't, won't go off at home, so I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, very good. Well, thank you. That's all I have, and thank you very much for all the work you've done to ensure that our staff feels empowered, and that was the feedback we got, and we're taking that forward.
One quick thing, just a reminder that you're actually encouraging staff to use them. This is not a habit and never use it, because fights, kids getting hurt, especially if it's a child, like rerunning down the hallway in that patrol, this is actually to be used, right? And I want to make sure that we emphasize that, is I don't want teachers afraid to use it. We want them to know that if they're at risk, or a child's at risk, they're going to use it, and they're going to get their support. And that's really, that's the biggest thing for me, and I think in the schools that you guys have done, is made this a part of the day, so these teachers, right?
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Connell, because it's really what attracted us to the product from the get-go, and kudos to Brent Keiger. He started working with Synthegix right around the winter break, so well before the Alatha East incident. We've been looking into this product. But what we do like about it is it's a product that you use every day in your district, and we want teachers to use it if they need assistance for anything. And again, that could be a medical issue, whether a staff member themselves is having chest pains, they can hit the button three times, it helps on the way. Student gets hurt out on the playground, teacher can hit the button three times, helps on the way. So there's a variety of reasons that we feel we'll be using this on a daily basis. The software that comes with this also allows us to run data by building, and so we'll be able to see how many alerts we've had throughout each quarter and what types of alerts, because after an alert is over, the minute that one of the building responders will close it out and categorize it as medical, or a student issue, or an elopement, or what have you. And so we're looking forward to seeing that data and how much we use it, but we like the fact that it's not just a button on the wall that you hope you never touch. It's something we're going to use every day in our district.
Other questions?
I'd like to say a couple things, if that's okay. The first one is I'd like to thank Dr. McMullin and Mr. Keiger, and Mr. Caldwell, who I think is in the back of the room, you know, for their work on this. You know, certainly, we are pleased to be able to bring this forward to our community after the incident at Alatha East, but you know, Dr. McMullin just said a second ago that this is something that we started looking at prior to that. And you know, a lot of credit goes to our Board of Education, Passports of Education, and our community for continuing to support bond issues in our district, because that's really the thing that's given us the opportunity to continuously look for the next safety solution, the next thing to move forward in terms of safety in our district. And I would just like to say, you know, on behalf of our staff, it's something that we maybe take for granted from time to time in our district, but we shouldn't, because we've had so many successful bond issues, and our community has continued to say that we support safety in our schools. It really allows us to bring a product like this forward, staff members that are dedicated to making sure our schools are safe, strong partnerships with law enforcement, fire, all those kinds of things. But I'm so proud of the work that our team here has done. Certainly, it was something we were researching, you know, prior to the incident at Alatha East, but the feedback from our staff at Alatha East was really, really valuable in terms of really making the decision that this was a product that fit very well for our needs, and some of the concerns of this expressed by our staff. So I just want to thank that whole crew at Alatha East, and our Safety Services Team here at the district, and ultimately, our community. here at the district and ultimately our community for continuing to support the strong work that we do around student and staff's safety in our schools.
Mrs. Steele, I recalled what I was going to.
Yes.
Answer your question earlier about setting it off accidentally at home. The second piece to that that comes up is, is this device tracking me? And that's part of our training with our staff, and the answer to that is no. So the only time anyone will know where you are on our property is when you activate the badge. Otherwise, there's, there's no, that's the only way you're identifiable to the first responders or the building responders as well. So it only tracks once you've hit the button on, on property.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Great. Thank you. Moving on in presentations, I think we have Mr. Hutchison for the budget development update.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you on where we're at in our budget process. As you see in your agenda, there's going to be two action items later on, both regarding public notices of two different hearings. The first hearing is one that we've traditionally had for at least as long as I've been here. I'm sure it's been going on for decades. But it's basically a publication of a summary of our maximum budget that we could potentially set and the maximum levies that would be in place. The second is a notice of hearing for our intent to exceed what's called the revenue neutral rate. And both of those will be published, as you'll see in a timeline, later August 19th. But as we move towards that finalization of the budget, I just wanted to go over a few factors with you tonight on what, some of the driving factors around that budget development. The first thing is, we're actually projecting for the first time, non-COVID, a decrease in the headcount of our school district. Remember, we used to always show a wonderful graph that just showed how fast we've been growing since consolidation in 1964? We'll see if this projection is correct, but it's, we anticipate decreasing about 100 students this coming year. However, that doesn't equate to what we're funded on. We're funded on a full-time equivalent basis, and we have to point back one year or two years for our funding. And we will be looking at the 2020 full-time equivalent students. Why not last year? Because we heard that we had gained students. We gained students after September 20th count is where we really started to get some of our students back. So, and also, it sounds very strange, but the virtual students are actually backed out this year. We, we saw them in our counts for full-time equivalent last year in 2021, but they don't, they're gone this year. And it's not because they're gone, they're removed from the count. So it's, it's a little complicated how the, how the virtual students work. But bottom line, we're looking at 2020 right now, and that's going to represent about an 884 funded student decrease. Traditionally, and again this year, we will be adding 10% to some of our main weightings. Now, we get paid current on our weightings. So if we anticipate a number of at-risk students, or, and that's measured by free lunch students, why not just budget exactly what you think it's going to be? We add a buffer of 10% on because we can't take a bit, if it exceeds where we set it, we cannot get the, the local option budget on that funding. It's a little bit in the weeds, but you always want, we're encouraged by the Department of Ed on some of these, these weightings to pad them higher, buffer them higher. If they come in less, you just don't get the weighting for them. They come in more, you still get the weighting, plus you get the local option budget and the state aid on that local option budget, which is more important. Our assessed valuation residential and commercial is a 9.4% increase, which are going to see the impact of that on many of our levies. And our base aid for student excellence, our base aid is $4,846 per FTE. That's an increase of about 100 or of $140. And this will represent the last year of a scheduled amount from the Gannon Court decision. Next year, increases will be tied to a three-year average consumer price index change. So historically, this is how, how it's been progressing. As you can see, the last five years, we've had a very slated increase to where we're at $4,846 per pupil. And next year will be the first year that we move to a CPI-based. Some of the other things that we take into consideration when we work on our budget is we're trying to maximize our state aid through that local option budget. Once again, that's why we do buffering, we try to do anything we can to maximize our state aid and our capital outlay authority. We have a lot of capital needs. We'd like to stop using bond for all of our, for some of our capital needs, so we're trying to build that fund. Bond and interest remains, it had been creeping down, and we made a promise it won't exceed our current rate. It's down very minimally, but it's below that rate and will fund the debt schedule. We have no additional ability to transfer staff salaries over into the capital outlay fund. All the eligible staff are in there. And as, as you've heard over and over, that's slowing student growth so that it used, where we were flat and now we're starting to decline, that's affecting us because we're losing our Board of Tax Appeals authority. And you'll kind of see that in a moment. That began last year and it'll continue on for the next several years. This is actually the, what's happening in BOTA without any local option budget, just the, what do we get from BOTA? In previous years, we've kind of held back. We had more authority, but we knew this was coming, so we didn't, we didn't maximize it. We kind of capped out at 20 mil, 20 million and went down to 19. Next year, it'll be down to 14.4, and it'll continue over the next six years to go to zero unless we were to build a new building that might dampen that, that decline. An elementary school doesn't have the same effect as a high school. So that's why you saw these peak amounts available back in 1920. We had West come online, we had Summit Trail come online, so we had all kinds of authority. And I stood before you and said, don't use it all, it just digs the hole a little deeper. So we stopped at about $20 million. An elementary is not going to help push that way back up again. It just doesn't have the same, same value. Everything in school finance is about the legal maximum budget. It's one of the one unique things about Kansas. I haven't made this statement in a long time. It's been 15 years since I moved from St. Louis to here. In St. Louis, if you run into a rough time and you have a public that just applauds your school district, you go out for a tax increase and you get more money. That's not how it works in Kansas. Everything flows to the state for your general fund funding and comes back to you in a funding formula. And that funding formula determines, here's your maximum budget. You have no way to go out and ask for more, there's no more coming from the state. It's a very complicated formula, but it's a fair formula. It, it tries to neutralize where students live all across Kansas. Last year, that legal maximum budget was $304 million. This year, it's 302. We're going to decrease about $2 million in what our maximum budget can be. This is what I call unbuffered. If I pull out that I've hedged that we're going to have some more at-risk students or we're going to have some more virtual students, then it's, it's a $1.8 million loss. Otherwise, we'd have another $3.2 million. If you look at the, if you looked at it right now, you'd see, you'd say, oh, well, it's up, you're up about a million dollars. You're not down $2 million. That's because there's buffers built in to those state worksheets that you have. This is how that breaks down as far as levies go. 20 mils is statutory across the state. The local option budget is going to decrease 1.195 mils. That's all driven by calculation. Why is it going down? Basically, higher assessed valuation. You don't need as big of a rate to raise the same dollars you did last year. Capital outlay, we maximize at eight mils. That's statutory again. You can go less, but the most you can do is eight mils. BOTA, once again, that's just driven by, that's a schedule. It's going to decrease 1.394, and it'll continue to click down as our authority for BOTA goes down. Special liability, up very fractionally. Cost of living is really a measure that it's expensive to live in Johnson County, so in order to help your staff, you have this special levy. It's decreasing not only because assessed valuations are higher, believe it or not, even at 9.4% increase, our average home price did not increase as much as the average across the state. So that means you're not as wealthy of an area anymore, Alatha. Therefore, we don't have to let you raise this additional funds to attract your staff. Now, I think some staff might differ about that, but that's the way the formula works. Special assessment is decreasing slightly. Special assessments are the benefit districts. When you have to put infrastructure in an area, they're kind of weaning off of those in our area, but we still have a schedule that we have to support until they're all gone. And then the bond and interest that is down. So you see, overall, our levy is going to go down 3.355 mils. You, this contemplates utilizing all of your authority. And the general statutory is set, local option budget, it's down just because of the higher valuations. We've maximized capital outlay, you can't use any more extraordinary growth, and all of the other ones are kind of based on need. There's all those levies, but that's not how your tax bills come out. So I always like to show everybody, what's it going to look like on the tax bill? It's 20 mils compared to 20 mils, so there's no increase. Bond is down about 0.4% or 0.063 mils. And all the other six levies all get bundled up into school gen, and it'll be down 3.2 or 9.7%. And overall, the levy itself will be 4.9. That's at a maximum scenario. Now, this revenue neutral rate, revenue neutral rate is basically what's the rate to raise the same amount of dollars as you had last year without thinking about any increase in costs or cost of living or anything like that? So our actual levy last year was 68.282. That neutral rate is 62.646. What I just proposed to you was 64.927. So while we're decreasing 3.3 mils from last year, we're going to be 2.2 above the revenue neutral rate. Want to point out something really important, though. 52% of it, or 1.194 mils is the general fund. You have no control over that. You must levy 20 mils. So the idea of being able to roll back the rate, you can't do that. Capital outlay, you could do that if you so choose. However, as you know, construction material costs alone went up 18% last year. Year-to-date, they're 8% higher. Everything we do in the capital outlay fund is going to cost us a lot more. So I've maximized it at eight mils in order to generate additional funds. That will generate, that's about a 10% increase, so to speak, above the revenue neutral rate. But I'm thinking we're going to have 18% increase in costs, so we're still going to be behind the eight ball in that fund. And then all the other funds combined are about a 0.324 increase. This is our levy history. Yes, it, it was at its peak in 2017, 18, and recent years, and now it's down to 64. It could swing up in a recession. It's all about what's the valuations doing? That's what kind of drives your, your levies up and down. So with that being said, all we're doing tonight is really focusing on that, on those publications. And then documents will get posted onto our website for, for review. We have set our hearing dates to be August, excuse me, these publications will happen on August 19th in the Alatha News. And then we'll have our public hearings on, I apologize, I didn't change the August 21st. They're both August 19th. And August 31st, it will be the public hearings. We'll start one at 5:00. You have to do the revenue neutral rate first, and we'll begin the other one at 5:15. If there is still people wanting to speak to the budget, it doesn't matter, they just both open up and you come to the podium and, and express any comments you might have. And then at your September 1st meeting, we would be adopting the budget, and it has to be on file by September 20th. So just, I've said it 100 times, but I'll say it again, you're not approving any budget this evening. Everything's been set to the absolute max. We're just asking you to approve the publication of, of those maximums, and then we'll move on with the budget process and posting those documents out on the website and finalizing it for September 1st. Questions?
Good question. If I could ask you a quick question?
Sure.
You mentioned this is, you know, the cost of goods have gone up and the possible recession. Does this include a safety net in case an actual recession comes forward in the next few months and then things start dropping? I mean, have we built in enough safety net in here to protect the budgets and protect the district? Were a serious recession hit two months, four months, six months into the school year? I guess that's my question.
As, as much as we can by setting it to, taking advantage of everything you have to maximize, maximize that legal maximum budget. If, if something catastrophic happened economically, but as you all know, budgets are very fluid. We'd have to, we constantly review and we'd have to make adjustments if we needed to, to cut something further for some reason. Usually, the fund is pretty much locked in for the year. Collection rates could change, but generally, they don't even, every recession we've been in, ironically, people pay their taxes first. Actually, collections go up during recessions. So I, I know it's not an exact answer, Mr. Connell, but basically, by maximizing as much as we can get, we'll, we'll be, we're trying to still fit kind of a bigger circle into a smaller one now because we're in this decline. So there's not a lot of cushion, but we'd have to find it if something happened.
Yeah, I was just identifying that you've addressed some of the safety nets that we have to have.
Absolutely.
That's why the revenue neutral rate, we're asking for a little bit more in case, but you have a safety net. For the sake of having thought ahead of all that, that's what I'm making sure, because you told, what you shared the other day, and it's like, that's your job, right?
The buffering helps with that quite a bit. And I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds on this buffering, but a lot of people don't understand that, like, for example, that notice of hearing just showed all the expenses. And like, why is, why is the virtual program $500,000 when it was $200,000 last year? Because we put $300,000 in case we get some sort of virtual grant we want to take advantage of. Why do you even have $200,000 if you don't have a virtual program? We've always had an e-academy that does ingenuity for credit recovery. That's considered virtual education. Unfortunately, it doesn't show you that we added $300,000 to the revenue. So it doesn't impact levies or anything. It's on both sides, but these are the documents we must use in the process, unfortunately. And they, they don't always show the, the whole story.
Appreciate that.
One of the things I might mention about recession as well is in the past, when our, our state has been in a recession, typically, that's impacted school districts by way of late payments to school districts in terms of state funding for school districts that, as John said, goes there and then comes back to us. You know, the, part of the buffer that, as you asked that question, and I'm sitting here thinking about is the state of Kansas is probably in the best financial shape that they've been, at least in my lifetime right now. And so, you know, there, there is some inherent buffering even from them right now, because in the past, when we've had recessions, that's really what's impacted us as a school district and across the state is those delayed payments from, from the state of Kansas to maintain our operation as a school district.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions?
You may have mentioned this already. I apologize if you're repeating yourself, but the buffers, that's recommended, that's not just something we do on our own. It's recommended by the state.
Department of Education recommends us doing that.
And again, sorry for talking too much, but, you know, in the, in the last couple of years, you may remember, we were the recipients of a $3.2 million federal linked literacy grant. So had we not been able, had we not built any buffers into our budget, had we gotten that $3.2 million, we would have had to wait an entire year to start using that money until the board built that money into our budget. So it really gives us the ability to get going quickly. As I shared last month, we received, you know, a little over a million dollars in grants to be able to move that kind of work forward.
Others? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hutchison.
See you next month.
Yes. All right, moving on, action consent. I guess I'd ask if there's anything that anybody needs to pull off? Otherwise, I entertain motion.
I would. We have in, in 5.05, there's board policy revisions, and there's a number of board policies in there. And the board policy that I have, would like to ask a question about to better understand it, is IDAE labeled student privacy policy? And I would just like to separate it up, so I could ask a question at that time, is that okay?
Yep, absolutely.
So would you like Mr. Pittman to speak about that now, or would you like to separate it out and vote first?
I think he can speak to it now.
I'm not going to ask him. I just, I don't want to sell things. So my question has to do with, and by the way, 99% of all the changes, I love it, I'm really happy with it. I had a question around language on, and what I'm looking at on the screen says page 16, which is basically in the paragraphs. It reads, "If however any dish you complain becomes, wherever a student may be at risk of suicide by a credible report, yada, yada, yada." Then it says, "The designated staff member is unable to verbally notify the parent or guardian and obtain consent after reasonable attempts to do so, the designated staff may administer the risk assessment." Do we have a definition of what, how many attempts is considered reasonable attempts?
Yeah, it's, that's taken from the statute. It's verbatim HB 2567. It is not defined in that statute. What's reasonable is going to be to the determination of our counselors, our emotional health folks, mental health folks are going to determine that. I know that they are, they would be tasked with contacting the parents and guardians. So if not one, both. If they weren't able to get one, they, for example, they called the other. But no, it's not, it's not, it's not defined.
Because in the statute, it actually says almost the same thing again, which is the last sentence. "The designated staff shall verbally, child being a requirement, verbally notify the parent or guardian before the administration of such risk assessment." Again, that's my only concern with the whole policy. Is what would we, when we adopt it, what would we coach? What would we guide to? What is expected? What is reasonable? And again, to that, I would say, we want to make sure that every adult that is a guardian for those kids, that we have names, addresses, phone numbers. Hence, when you register your kids, please get both parents or grandparents or... We want to gather that information to be good in reaching out to anybody that we can to make sure that, you know, we're trying to take the kids, keep them safe, right? That's, that's kind of what you and I talked about. That's what I'm, what is reasonable. And I just want to make sure that we are clear when we adopt that, what that means and what we're going to try to do. Like, parents and staff have to be connected and communicating. They need to see you at the parent-teacher nights so they recognize, oh, you're Mr. Pittman, right? I, because I'm really good with the language. I just want to make sure that we all hear it, they all hear that this doesn't just happen in a vacuum, right? We're not actually trying to step in for a parent. We're actually trying to partner with them.
So I will say, I don't think this represents a major change for us as a school system at all. Again, you know, it's best practice for us to update our policies to align with state statute to keep all this out of trouble in this room and beyond. The piece that is very valuable to us as a school system, regardless of what the topic is, is when we're concerned about a student, is that we partner with parents. And there are 99.9% of the times where we are able to do that. And that will continue to be our commitment. That's the work that our, you know, counseling team works through and those kinds of things. However, I believe, you know, one of the things that, again, probably not a change in practice, but there are times where our staff believes a student is in danger. And suicide could be an example, but there could be other examples. Child abuse, those kinds of things. Where a staff member feels like a student is in danger. And as a mandated reporter, by law, they're required to report that. And I would say that's typically our default. If we can't get with a parent or the student's afraid of something that involves their parents, you know, typically, we work through several steps before we say, you know, this is, we're just going to move from step A to step B. And that will continue to be our practice is to, whenever we possibly can, you know, make every attempt imaginable to work with the parent, to get what we need, you know, in terms of supporting a kiddo. But there are those times that, you know, a staff member has to make the challenging decision that, do I move forward at this point? And a lot of times, like you said, that's a DCF, call department, family services, those kinds of things. Or even a call to the police department at times. So, you know, typically, that's how that would be resolved probably, rather than us just administering a risk assessment. But again, we're relying a lot on the professional expertise of our staff in our schools and that kind of thing. So again, I don't think this represents a large change in our practice. But obviously, the statute has changed to give a little bit more flexibility to staff in that situation.
And with such rest these days of suicide and suicidal kids, what they can might do to themselves and others. I know the language is specifically around suicide in this particular paragraph. It's very clear about suicide. I just want to go on record, it's like, our first, most important priority is the safety of that child and the children around them. If that means 45 minutes or an hour and a half or two hours or whatever that takes. And if that means we call DCF and that means we call the police, I would rather, we, like you just said, has always been the model to defer to safety at all costs. And apologize later for having to call my one run because there was talk in the bathroom of kids talking about something. Keep them alive. We can always fix, we can always get them help later, right? That's the first priority. But I know I heard from some folks and I want to ask that question out loud. I know you shared with me and Mr. Pittman. And I just want to, you know, that language is vague sometimes on purpose to allow us some flexibility in how to do that. But thank you for our feedback and thank you, Mr. Pittman, for spending the time to get the doctrines to me because that's a lot of reading.
And I'm very comfortable saying, you know, our staff as a very last resort is going to move forward with a suicide risk assessment, that kind of thing, without a parent or guardian's notification and them being involved. I mean, that's, that just would never be our general intent. But, you know, the good thing about the statute is it does give us a little bit of flexibility there in the very extreme cases.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Wickliff, for letting me ask the question.
Absolutely. Other questions on anything in consent or anyone would like to pull out?
Yeah, I'd like to pull out 5.06, please.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. Can we, I would entertain a motion on 5.01 through 5.05, and then we can take 5.06 separately?
Yeah, I'll move to approve 5.01 to 5.05 as presented.
Can I second that?
Motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. Connell.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. 5.06.
Yeah, so...
Mrs. Steele?
Yeah, Mr. Wickliff, would you, do you mind, for the sake of people that haven't seen that in the agenda, just let us know what that, what is being proposed by the committee?
Yeah, I would actually have one of the members of the committee, if they want to describe that.
Sure, I'll defer to Ms. Felter if she'd like to. If not, I can do so. She's a ranking member.
Hi, guys. Sorry I can't be there tonight. The proposed policy that you see before you is essentially regarding public comments. And we have proposed live streaming them. And, I'm looking for the exact language, sorry. Live streaming them and then they will be available on YouTube as well. For anybody who wants to view at a later time, they'll be incorporated into the regularly scheduled board meeting.
If you kind of what you were looking for?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, thank you. I just, I have some comments I'd like to share. And I've had the opportunity to discuss with several of my fellow board members in, in the past many months that this issue's been before us. And as well as constituents on both sides of the issue and how they feel. You know, that I want to be clear that this issue has never been about discontinuing the public comment forum. And, you know, that the the contention about live streaming changes nothing regarding our commitment to hearing from, as well as following up with invested community members. And, you know, when, in my many, many thoughts about this, I'd say that the issue that we are battling with is the value of live streaming public comments versus the value of public comments to the board. That's really the difference. And, you know, public comments are for the sole purpose of addressing the board. So, you know, is the Board of Ed irrelevant to the speaker if the point is to be livestreamed? And to the speaker requesting to be livestreamed, who are you truly interested in addressing? You know, there's many access points for the public to engage with us, both personally, privately, and publicly. That's not the only opportunity. But I would say, my final thoughts on it, and I am looking forward to putting this to rest, I know many of us are. But agreeing to continue live streaming public comments, in my opinion, is also being supportive of complicity in perpetuating when on the not-so-rare occasion that misinformation and sometimes purposeful disinformation is shared, that is usually only a one-sided account, and the board, due to FERPA and employment law, cannot explain publicly or speak to. I also think that if you're in agreement with this, that the complicity in the community misconstruing public comments as board business is, is too tightly wound for me. Because public comments are separate from the business of the board. You know, the expectation that our staff is going to continue to have to address the influx of questions that come from inaccurate information being shared is not an expectation, I want to continue, that our staff has to continue to do that. And when we're livestreaming to thousands, that's what happens. And I'd like to see our staff be given the permission to put kids first and not be chasing down the continual questions for clarification based on one person's journey with our school district. Lastly, I'd say that continuing to allocate district resources when we're in a budget crisis and making very difficult decisions is a hard, a hard one for me to swallow and not one that I'm willing to. There were some things that I was, I was not going to live with, and I'm glad they changed. 5 o'clock wasn't working. We tried it, and it's not working for our community. I hope 5:30 is better, but I'd like to know, is that enough? You know, discontinuing streaming our business meetings is not a pass for me. So last month's motion, I was unable to be at the meeting. I was at a different meeting, but I wouldn't have been able to vote for that. I think that the limited capacity of this room and the need for our community to watch us govern publicly is very important. So livestreaming the business meeting is something I think absolutely should not be considered to not do. And I would say reducing that time slot back to 30 minutes. I think this motion says up to 45?
Correct, up to 45. And the recommendation of the committee is that we would start our meetings at 5:45. So given that, you know, another extra 15 minutes to sort of...
Okay. I appreciate that. Tonight, when our speakers had five minutes to speak, it was, it was, you know, much improved. I don't, it's uncomfortable for me when we have speakers getting up that have two minutes to speak and they're talking so fast that you're not even sure what they're trying to say. Letting them relax and have more time, to me, is definitely a plus. But I can't, based on those reasons, support livestreaming the public comment portion.
Okay. Anybody else have comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion?
I just have a question, Ms. Steele. If we're not livestreaming it, you're worried about the misinformation going out. We're still putting the video out three days later, so the information's going to go out, whether it's on Thursday night or on Tuesday night.
I wouldn't have supported that motion.
To livestream or?
Public comments, right, or post it.
Or the video, okay.
Right.
Others? If not, I'd entertain a motion?
I don't have a question, but I do want to make a comment. I think, you know, we asked our committee to go back and do some work a couple of times. We took staff time to go back and meet and craft this, this policy again. While I don't totally support in full what the committee came back with, I do support and respect the time that the committee and staff took to draft this policy. And I think as a board, if we ask our fellow board members to go back and do work and spend time to, to bring us policies and ideas, I think it's important to, to respect that. And not to say that you don't by any means, that's what I'm trying to say. But, you know, just for that reasoning, for reasoning, you know, I will support this policy change.
All right. Others? If not, I'd entertain a motion?
Make the motion to approve 5.06 board policy revisions for BCBI.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Connell, a second by Mr. Kuhn?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
No.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to two. Moving on, actions, bids, contracts, and agreements. Oh, I can't move on, actually, and that's my fault. So because we've altered the time of the start time of meetings going forward, we actually need an amendment to what we said we were going to do in July. So I think, Mr. Boyd, do you have a proposed motion?
I do have a motion.
Awesome.
I move to modify the resolution previously adopted by the board at its July 14, 2022 meeting, Agenda Item 7.01, which establishes the dates, times, and locations of the regular meetings of the board for the 2022-2023 school year to specify that the board will begin its regular meeting at 5:45 PM for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Kuhn?
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Honestly, I had a note here to like, do that. And I just skipped right over it.
You did a nice job, Mr. Wickliff. We got it done.
All right, now we can move on to bids, contracts, and agreements. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question, but I do just want to call out the work that staff has done with these contracts, bids, and agreements. If you will look through them, some of them are increasing. And I imagine that's due to inflation and some of these products are sole source providers. But I do want to call out, you know, there are some renewals where previously it was a three-year agreement or a three-year contract where staff has recommended a one-year renewal, one-year contract to reduce that cost to our district. So I want to call out the work that staff is doing to reduce those costs and those renewals.
That's a good point. Thank you. Others? If not, I'd entertain a motion?
I move to approve Action Bids Contracts Agreement 6.01 through 6.11.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Boyd, a second by Mrs. Steele.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Action Other, these would be the, the items that Mr. Hutchison spoke on?
Move to approve Action Other 7.01 and 7.02.
Second.
Come on, guys. I have a motion by Mr. Connell, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. You'll see future action items. As always, I would encourage you to get questions into, to Dr. Jaeger early so that we can be prepared for those as they come up. Did want to call some attention to information written. You'll see a new item there that we'll continue to do, the 2022 bond issue updates, so that we can sort of see that progress as we continue to do projects related to the 2022 bond. So just want to call that out.
Dr. Jaeger, will that be made available to the public as well?
Great question. So what will happen? We have a sequence set up. Maggie Kolb and Travis Planes, you've been working on this, that the board will get a written report. And then very quickly, within the next few days, it will also be posted to our Bond 22 website. So what you all are seeing, and of course, it would be accessible to the public here as well. But we'll start documenting those, if you will, on our website as well. So our public can see our bond progress that way.
That's great. Thank you to you and to staff for putting that together.
We need to move, make a motion to accept the written material so that it can be put out?
Nope.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, topics for discussion. Any board members have anything that they want to?
I do have a couple of items. I had the pleasure of attending the Back to School Outreach Event that is done yearly by Heather Schooner, Schooner over and her team in community development. It's one of my favorites. I always enjoy, it's always a pleasure. But for me, it's a really a good example of what we do well as a district, right? These kids and these families who come as they are, we really wrap our arms around them, love them, love on them. And the other, the thing that really brings me joy is seeing our community come out, all of our community partners, those relationships that Heather and her team have built. It's a really, really phenomenal thing to witness, to be a part of. And I'm just grateful that it's something that we do as a district to love on these families and love on these kids. The other thing I want to talk about as we begin to, begin this school year and have kids showing up in our classrooms, is I've heard from, you know, of course, my kids are enjoying... are enjoying sleeping in late. They aren't ready to go back to school. But I've heard from teachers and administrators of how excited they are and how anxious they are to have kids back in their buildings. And I think it's a time for us to kind of restart and level set and assume best intentions from staff, administrators, and even the board members sometimes. But as board members, I think it's important for how we show up to do this work. Doing the work is one thing, but showing up in a way, presenting ourselves in our best light we can, I think is also important. So just wanted to kind of level set for myself, really. But any board member that wants to take advantage of that and join me, I will welcome the level setting to make sure we're showing up as our best selves. Thank you.
Others?
I just have a quick one about, I can't remember, it was April or May, we had a speaker, Dave Miller, talk to us about foreign exchange students and what an asset they are to our district. And I just want to offer, our family did that in 2018 to 2019, and it was life-changing. We really have forged relationships with this young man's family that are going to be, you know, forever. And most, there's so many exchange programs, but most of them have some level of reference to how if every family would participate in a foreign exchange student, it doesn't have to be a year. We did a year. It can be part of a semester or a semester, that it would lead to world peace. And the idea behind that being that once you really get to know somebody from another country and understand them on a personal level, that there's no way you can think differently about that going forward. So it was a great experience for our family. I'm so thankful we did it. And I just want to shout out if there's kids or teachers that are hearing, you know, kids talk about, I would love to help find a program. Ours was Rotary, but like I said, there's a lot. And Louis was our exchange student, and he's just so fondly revered even now at Alatha Northwest. And it was great all around, great for him, great for us, and great for the students that got to go to school with him. So anyway, my shout out for foreign exchange student programs. And also Megan had spoke earlier about reassignments. And when I taught, I was one of those teachers. I had opened Heather Stone with my program, my Sped program. And then as new schools do, it got full. And so my program that summer got transferred to across the street from Heather Stone to Walnut Grove. And, you know, the first reaction to that is kind of gut-wrenching. It's going to be new staff, new experience. I have to tell you, what far outweighed it is the receiving end of a new school getting a teacher in there, and they know. They know that you just found out because their classrooms are all done and yours isn't. And it is a nice, there are many hidden surprises in that. And it was, I just want to offer the flip side of that. It's hard. I know that our planning department, HR, that is not their first goal is to rip someone out of school and plop them somewhere else, especially this late in the game. But as we try to be good fiscally with our dollars, it's necessary. And I would say the hidden surprises in that far outweigh the feeling like the rug got pulled out from underneath. So anyway, from personal experience, I just wanted to offer that it all works out. So thank you.
Others?
I just want to, this is from the board and for myself personally, I want to thank all the teachers. And I want to remind all the parents to show grace, kindness, to use Mr. Boyd's words, best intentions, mindset going in. We have a lot of new teachers, a lot of teachers in new classrooms and new schools. I think he's, I think, Mr. Boyd, I will let go, is I did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Wickliff, Mr. Boyd. And that was one of the things that we talked about is, let's assume the best. Let's think the best. Let's work the best. We are in an extremely challenging year of transition for a lot of folks. And if you are a parent and you care, then I fully expect you're going to send a note with your kids that says, "I am here, and this is how to reach me. Let me know how I can help." Because the success of this district going forward is going to be all constituencies. Amazing talent that works in the schools and within the schools for your kids at every place, and the parents stepping into those roles like we've never, like we haven't done in a long time. Please best, as Mr. Boyd said, best intentions with grace and kindness. And if you are whatever faith you are, and whether you do not have faith, if you pray, pray for everybody. We would like a better, a normal but better year. And I know you all do too. So that is my hope and my intention with the board and with grace for all.
Thank you. Others?
Foreign attack. You could just start talking. Raise your hand.
No. I really don't have any.
I never know sometimes.
Okay, I'll just make the comment that I'm glad that the Alatha School Board does not have to prepare for war with France.
I took that off the table, right?
Yeah, that's right. Since our foreign exchange shooting was French.
Yeah.
I love it. Dr. Jaeger, the floor is yours.
All right, Dave, thank you very much. You know, I'm going to start by saying, school starts next week, and we are so excited. You know, I've reflected a lot over the last couple of weeks about where, I don't know why I'm laughing, but it's true. Where our world was at this time last year, and boy, it feels good this year. So, you know, we are so excited to welcome our kids and our staff back and what will be a normal but better school year, you know. We have so many important things to accomplish this year, both around academic achievement and climate and culture. And, you know, it's going to take all of us as a unified community to make this system the very best it can be. And if we can't do it in the Alatha Public School District, nobody can. So I'm really excited about this year. You know, I would like to celebrate and mention a couple of things. In terms of this year, you know, we're still struggling across the system a little bit for classified staff positions, especially. We have a little over 200 open and available. That includes maintenance staff, custodians, people who work in our food services department, excuse me, paraprofessionals, things like that. So if you know somebody that would like to work for the Alatha School District, HR would love to talk to them. So just please keep that in mind. I would like to thank HR for a very successful career fair last week that they held. They had over 100 people attend that career fair, and we offered about 40 jobs out of that career fair. So lots of work, obviously, to get that out and make that happen, but they did an exceptional job with that. We're very, very grateful for that. I'd also like to thank Alatha Public Schools Foundation. As you all likely know, our new educators all reported to work this week. And, you know, in terms of a community wrapping their arms around people who are going to be very important to us and our kids in Alatha, no one does that better than our Public Schools Foundation in this district and working with our partners. So I just wanted to express my gratitude to them for all that they've done to support our new teachers as they've joined our system this week as well. I'd also be remiss tonight if I didn't spend a little bit of time thanking Dr. Sarah Guerrero for her time and effort and energy for the Alatha Public School District. Dr. Guerrero served both in our district as a teacher, a school administrator, and district administrator. And I tell you, her fire and passion for what's best for kids and staff probably cannot be replicated anywhere in the United States. So, you know, a tremendous loss to our system. But as you know, Dr. G moved back to Texas to be with closer to her family and that kind of thing. And it was the right thing for her to do, and we wish her the very best. But I did not want to let the opportunity pass to thank her for incredible contributions to our system. So if you're watching, Dr. G, thank you and we love you. I also want to, with that in mind tonight, introduce Luanne Hermerich. And Luanne, I make people stand up when I do that. So we'll give you a minute to get on your feet there. I can't begin to tell you how thrilled I am that Luanne was willing to come back on an interim basis for this year. I talked to Dr. G about her plans on a Saturday morning. Within three hours, I was sitting at a table with Luanne. And she thought I was there seeking advice and counsel. I said, "Actually, I'm here to talk to you about a job." So and here she is. So it worked out well. But, you know, Luanne is responsible for so many of the things that are strength for us as a system, knows many of our people, the way we move, the way we groove, and will help us this year, I know, get to the point where we need to be in terms of finding the long-term replacement for our learning services leadership. But I thank you, Luanne, so much for coming and joining us. So we're going to close tonight by giving it up for Luanne. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I understand we need an executive session. How long?
Let's start with 30.
Okay.
Move the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney for the body or agency pursuant to the exceptions for matters which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client privilege under coma. And the board return to the regular meeting at 8:40 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beveridge, second by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay.
That's scary. I have to close this.
No.
Thanks, I would like that.
Wait, four of them.
Yeah.
Watch this face.
Are you going to lock us out?
We got it, Brian.
Okay.